Maybe he was like thirteen or fourteen.
Twenty-one.
Yeah.
Excuse me one minute.
Randy.
Scared.
When did it happen?
Okay, all right.
Oh, it's seven on the dot. Okay, I shut off. This is. Did you turn this on?
Welcome. Today's Tuesday, October fifteenth. We're starting our Borough Council meeting. It's going to be a good one, hopefully quick. We've got a lot on the agenda. We had executive session at 5:45. Mr. Flegger, would you like to tell, talk about it?
We had discussions on various labor and legal matters and personnel issues.
Hey. If we could all stand for the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Virginia Rollcall.
Mayor Wallace?
Present.
Catherine Price-Emblehart?
Present.
Catherine Wallace?
Present.
Melissa Johnson?
Here.
Reese?
Here.
Dennis King?
Here.
Andrew.
Joe.
Luke McGee?
Luke is not here, but he was here for executive session.
Scott Robinson?
Here. White House Tennessee.
Tennessee, oh my God.
Our borough manager?
George.
Thank you.
Hey, so we had some community announcements. Last Friday, we had Congressman Brian Fitzpatrick come. He presented two checks, $850,000 to the school district, and that was for technology and curriculum. And then he presented $4 million to the Marsville Municipal Authority for the new sewer plant that's going to be down at the old steel mill, KIP, Keystone Industrial Park. That was, that was really great. Hopefully, we've asked him for some dollars for the borough, so hopefully that some of that stuff can filter down to us. But it was nice of him to come and actually present. He spent some time talking with the council people and the borough manager, Jim Dillon, to get an idea of what is needed in the borough, what we'd like to do. So it was, I thought it was very informative. Starting January first, due to the negotiations with the borough employees, Borough Hall hours have been extended from 8:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. Pico has been working with us, and I see Gilmore and Associates, Jacob is here, he can talk to it, but Pico mentioned that they're going to be working on the gas lines in Marsville for the next two years. And they suggested that if you are, they're going to send a letter to the residents, but they suggested if you're interested in getting gas, you should come and contact them now, sooner than later, because of the cost, it might be a little more advantageous to the residents. I think that some of you may have noticed that our Public Works Department has been painting the street poles black. Mr. Dillon thought that that would enhance how the town looked. I think they do look better black, and I think they're just about done, correct, Mr. Dillon?
Better than rusty.
Better than rusty, better, much, much better than rusty. So they're almost done with that. Thank you, John, for all your employees' efforts. The MMA Water Department will be flushing the mains. They started yesterday, and it goes on through 10:24. If you go onto the website, you'll see the schedule for your neighborhood. And Summer Seat is looking for vendors for Saturday, December seventh, for their winter festival. So if anybody's interested, I think Karen Kane is the person that you can contact over at Summer Seat. As a community outreach, the CAC meeting, we had one last month, was sparsely attended, but that was to be expected. So we're still inviting residents to come out if they want to get involved in the various aspects of the town, and that meeting will be Wednesday, October 23rd. They're also looking for volunteers for Imagine Marsville with the Winter Fest Parade. The Halloween costume pickup is this Saturday on October 19th, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00. Gary, Mayor Wallace, has done a great job, and there's a lot of costumes. And Bella Sicily has also been collecting costumes, and they have some very nice ones. Police trunk or treat is going to be on October 29th, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at Borough Hall on the Union Street side. And then upcoming board openings, email letters of interest to office@marsvillborough.org. We have some open positions on the Planning Commission, the Zoning Board, the Economic Development Corp., the Municipal Authority, and the Environmental Advisory Council. Okay, I think that's it. Bella Sicily, over on Bridge Street, was celebrating their 51st anniversary today. So Garrett, Mayor Wallace, and I went over there, and they donated some fruit to the Borough Council people while we were in executive session. But if anyone wants to, please go and check them out. Their food is good. They have arancini, which is excellent. So please come out. It's kind of weird talking to an empty room.
Tenants.
I know.
Billy Joel concert, sold out.
It's sold out. So for council discussion, I have two things, but as Mayor Wallace and I were over at Bella Sicily, I'm going to add another item, but the street signs. So I think everybody saw in their packet, they're white street signs with the black lettering, and we were looking to replace all the green street signs throughout the borough. So is council okay with what that looks like, or do they have comments? Do they wish to have something different? Anything they want to add, or are they good with what the street signs look like?
Are you saying it was in the drop?
It was in the drop. Okay.
I think that, yeah, we have to, sorry, streets, and make book.
Even better. So if anybody in the public is interested in looking what those street signs look like, there were no street signs at the corner of Union and Delmore Avenue, so Mr. Dillon ordered two, just to see, you know, put them up, so that we did have street signs there. So if you want to see what the prototype looks like, that's what they're going to look like. The second thing is, and I guess I'll have to talk with you, Jacob, later, but over at the corner here on Washington and Bridge Street, it's very hard to get across, especially with all the traffic coming through. And it does say, "Do not block," but nobody adheres to that. Is there possible, and you don't have to answer tonight, and council, you should think about what you want there as well, if we put stop signs, I know we have to talk to PennDOT, and maybe next week we could do that, either stop signs at that light, or blinking lights that make people stop, or maybe even the street light, because even our officers, when they're trying to get downtown, they can't get through. They stand there at that corner a lot. And especially if you're trying to turn in to come to Borough Hall, you can't get in because the cars are blocking that intersection. And that is a huge place for residents to cross the street, because Ben's Deli is on that corner, the pizza parlor is on that corner. So if there's something that we wanted there. So does anybody have any objections if we pursue looking into that? Okay, so Jacob, you put that on your to-do? Excellent. Okay, that's, that's great. Okay, Jacob, welcome. Engineers report, Gilmore and Associates.
Yes, hello, everyone. Kurt was here last month, and I'm here back again this time. So there's several items on the agenda from engineering. I don't know if you want me to go through each of those? Okay. Yeah, so again, there's several items on your agenda tonight for consideration. The first two there are under 10G and 10H, and those are related to the Marsville Flood Protection Levy Project, and that's that accreditation to get the levy back on the FEMA map. So tonight, you're going to be considering approval to adopt a new emergency action plan for the levy and a new operations and maintenance manual for the levy. And that emergency action plan is, in the event if anything happens with the levy, it fails, water leaks through, this is response for your emergency services to follow the practices for blocking off, getting residents out, stuff like that. And then the operations and maintenance manual for that levy is for ongoing regular maintenance that's required and checking. So I know Public Works already does that. They frequently check it after heavy rains with meetings during, with DEP and the Army Corps. And if they need to address anything, they address it. There's several pipes that go through the levy. I know it's one thing that they regularly clean and maintain. So this just updates that, and these are both two items required by FEMA during the review of the levy accreditation project. So once we get those two items adopted, we will then resubmit to FEMA to get accreditation. They'll have to review it again, but these were the last two items, along with one little minor report edit that we had to do. So we'll resubmit all that for FEMA review. And just going down through the rest of your resolution, last month, you guys authorized us to submit some grant applications for you to the Department of Community and Economic Development for the local share account grant program. So you have a total of five applications on there, one of them being from the fire department for their rescue, light rescue vehicle. And then the other ones are all engineering-related items. So one of them is for Patriots Park improvements. So we've previously designed the project through other grant funds for a majority of the design. There's still some outstanding design that's related to permitting, stuff like that. So we've updated that cost estimate, and the total cost for that project would be around $1.7 million. The borough already has obligated some funding from the RACP. I'm blanking on what the acronym stands for right now, but the RACP program, so they have 500, you have $500,000 through that obligated to the borough for that, for construction funds only. So right now, we're going to request a million. That's all you can request from this local share account grant. And then we would look for further grant funding through other various programs for the remainder of the construction amount. The second one there on the list is the Trenton Avenue and Plaza Boulevard traffic signal replacement. So that, the traffic signal is outdated, there's some damage to some of the poles, so we are going to be applying for that. And that, you're going to request is $467,000 for that replacement project. Again, these local share accounts don't require a match from the borough, so they're the best option right now for looking for money. The next one there on your list is the Hillcrest Avenue Stormwater Improvement Projects. So this would address some of the stormwater issues that are occurring between Stockham Ave. and North Pennsylvania Ave. The road's in a little bit rough shape, and that's from some of the infrastructure underneath the road not holding up, so it's replacing pipes, inlets, stuff like that. And that grant request is for $332,280. The next one is West Palmer Avenue Stormwater Improvements. And again, this is another section that has some, this one lacks stormwater infrastructure, so there's no inlets or pipe or anything like that on the road. And there's a lot of groundwater there, so we're going to try to address that with some underdrains, installing new inlets and pipes along the road to help mitigate that problem, and hope we don't have potholes a period every other week. And that grant request amount is for $441,090. The other item there on your agenda is 10O, and that's for us, for Gilmore and Associates to proceed with recommendations for potential traffic calming along South Pennsylvania Avenue from U.S. Route, U.S. Route One to Post Road, and then also on West Philadelphia Avenue from South Pennsylvania to Wright Avenue. And this is to help look at options to help slow down traffic, beautify the street section like that. And, yes, you have our consideration for proposal for that for tonight. Do you want me to discuss the survey for the boat docks? Are you, have any questions on that? I can?
I was going to talk about it, but go ahead, because Gilmore came up to me. Actually, Mr. Dillon and I were just discussing the boat ramp in Bristol Borough, and that the Mr. Bristol Borough is going to get double their boat ramp size over there. And I said, "Well, what's wrong with Marsville?" So we started, we have a river, too. So Gilmore and Associates put together something, and they're going to look into, looking from Bridge Street down to Post Road, because north of there, it's all rocks, what the depth of the river is in order, could we get a boat ramp if we wanted to? So go ahead.
Yeah, so we've, we reached out to S.T. Hudson. They are a well-known firm that's, they did the Bristol Borough boat docks. They did the survey for that. So they were going to, they are going to survey the river there from that section, again, from Route One down to Post Road, to, at high tide, to determine if there's even feasibility to construct boat docks in this area. So this could not go anywhere with design, but it's at least an attempt to see if there's any, again, the river is tidal up till the U.S. Route One, so as Helen had said, Council President, that there's much rocks beyond that going north. So this would just help to identify those areas. Would you like me to go on to number 11B, which is your planning commission?
Well, I was, I have something to ask you.
Sure.
Regarding, regarding 11A, because something was brought to my attention, and it was about the $8,000. Were you explaining, or whomever, that you're not going to spend that money until you assess to see if it can be done?
No.
Am I making sense?
No, that's, that's the cost. That's the cost to do it.
Yeah, that cost is for this, this firm, S.T. Hudson, to go out there. They have to have a boat. They're going to go out there during high tide, float up and down that section of the river, get the depths down to the bottom of the river.
Well, the way, the way it was explained to me is that's already been done several times over the years.
Our office doesn't have any record of that? I'm not sure.
Even if it had been, though, even if it had been, you're going to have changes in the land beneath the water, depending on where the, so you're going to have evolution and, yeah, and accretion. So you're, you're going to have ebbs and flows, and that, so it would have to be done.
And we hadn't, when I talked to, a few years ago, to the county planning commissioners, they had said they had done studies for the, for boat ramp. But, but this is different, and I had just talked to Helen about it. It's different in what you're doing, and that hasn't been done. So if we want to do anything, we have to have it, and that small amount of money isn't great.
And has to be assessed. Okay, all right. I just wanted to, you know, put in my little bit of input from what I had heard.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
And we might spend the money, and nothing will come of it, but then we'll know. So if we ever wanted to do plans of any kind down south, we'll know. Yeah, go ahead, do 11B.
Okay, yeah, so then, under 11B there, you have a proposal from the Bucks County Planning Commission to assess the zoning for the several properties that are along that river front there that we just discussed, from Route One down to Post Road. There's already one cloverleaf that is currently under work to be redeveloped or remediation currently right now, and potentially be sold in the future. So looking at zoning for those options for the best that could come into the borough and residential, commercial, and stuff like that, they'd assist with reviewing those areas and finding out what the best options for zoning would be in those. So that's the proposal there, not to exceed 5,000 from them, and they would provide all the work up to that, of course, coordinating with the borough and the borough staff on those items. And then the last item I have on the agenda there is 11G, which is your motion to advertise and update to the borough's universal road standards ordinance. So the borough currently has roadway, roadway standards already adopted, and these would just be updating some of those. PennDOT has updated some of their material specs and stuff like that, so we'd be updating that, and also updating some of the road opening stand, repair standards for utilities that come in and do work within the roads, and where, when we require full width versus half-width paving of the streets, or just fixing the trenches. This outlines more detail for them on that. That's all that's on your agenda. I can give a couple of quick updates on some of the other projects going on in the borough right now, if you'd like. Road program?
The road program, we're going to be talking about next month, so you could talk about it then, I guess.
Yeah, that works.
Good, right. So the road program, we've been working with Pico and the MMA in order to find out what roads they're going to be working on, so that we don't pave the roads, and then they came along, come along and open them up, which is also why we have the road standards, 11G, so that we have more control if somebody does open up the roads, that we make them repave more of the road than just like a little square. So we're working really hard to make sure that when we pave the road, it stays paved for at least five-plus years. But of course, I hope that nobody gets upset, because things do happen, and, you know, something may happen where Pico has to come along.
Right, there's obviously emergencies that may come up, and we can't stop them from fixing those.
Correct.
With these updated standards that you're looking at later, yeah, we can try to help improve what's get to repave that.
Right, so you could talk about that next month. Anything else?
I was just going to give a quick update on Manor Park.
Go ahead.
So we've been out there, we've completed the survey for this project. So I have, we have that back now, and we just started with the layout. We're looking at layout for new playground equipment there. You have grant funding from this count from Bucks County for the Community Development Block Grant, the CBG Block, for $300,000, and that's to install new playground equipment. So that county agreement for the grant will be executed, hopefully, next month, at the beginning of November, with the county commissioners, and then we can go forward with actually putting it out for construction.
Can I ask a question? Just a quick question about that. So when you decide, does the county already have a plan of what equipment will be on there, or do we have a choice to say anything?
You all can ultimately have a final decision. We, I know we've provided some concept plans in the past with some, they didn't unfortunately bring them with me tonight, and I can't get my computer to connect.
Okay, because I'd rather, really like to, I have, you know, I have a degree in parks immigration, so I really would like to see.
Yeah, I know, I think.
I know it's, you're probably more updated than what I last saw.
I want to say, when the playground project originally started, there was correspondence with Clarkson Rec. Group, but I don't know if you've.
I haven't been led into anything, yeah.
I think this will be a council decision, not just a committee decision.
No, I realize that. I just wanted to see some concepts and get an idea.
Well, and all council will be given the concepts, and then all council can decide if they want something different, something smaller, something bigger. All council will have a part in that discussion.
Yeah. So we're working on that, and yeah, we should hope to have some sort of concept layout to present to you guys here in the future. I do know that, we just got an email today, that prices for playground equipment are going up next year, so if we can get this project through this year, that'd be great. At least purchase the equipment. I know that was the plan to do that, so if we can get that on the books, that'd be great, so we don't have to.
Do you want that on next month's agenda?
We can discuss that.
Okay, great.
With that, I don't have anything else specific, so if there's any questions for any items on your agenda, I'm more than happy to answer them, but.
Great report. Just for everyone's knowledge, Jacob has been working very, very hard for the borough, so we thank you, Jacob.
Thank you, no problem.
Okay, next is the borough manager report.
Just a few comments. One, I have to turn on my, okay, just a few comments. I don't know if you've noticed, I think the sound system has improved significantly, and, you know, so I want to thank Matt and whoever else helped them.
And you, Mr. Dillon.
I don't know anything about sound systems.
You realized there was an issue, and you fixed it.
Well, we all try. We're going to try. And I agree with your compliments to our engineers, Jacob and Kurt. I think they've done an excellent job in the last couple of months. Some significant items before council tonight they consider approving. I also want to thank the police chief for staying on top of the key fobs, and I think that, that subject is ready for your award this evening also. I had a somewhat of a long dissertation prepared in reference to a few people who attended last month's meeting and made some comments that gave me some concerns, but I'm going to keep it short. They felt that I was working the staff too hard. I did go down and speak with the staff, and the staff does not feel I'm working them too hard. I think we're all working together. We've had a significant loss of a staff member for over three months who got hurt at home. So our 25, our four staff members were down to three staff members, and given the fact that it happened, I think, July 1st, or thereabouts, that was the time of vacations and whatever. So it was a very difficult period of time for those that could show up to work, to work, but especially with a lot going on. When I first came here, I was confronted with a list from the prior manager of bullet points, of items that needed to be addressed, and I asked Virginia, I said, "Virginia, take these bullet points, and let's put numbers next to them, and also put numbers on the pages, so we can see what the heck we're talking about." Well, it was four pages, and it was 72 significant items, of items that should have been handled, you know, last year, prior years, or well before the time I wandered into the building. So everybody's pitched in, we're addressing those 72 items, and we're addressing many more. So I want to again thank staff for bearing with me and working, I think, to the best of their ability. And I think I'll leave a go at that for now.
I too want to reiterate that Mr. Dillon has been doing a great job. It was a little disconcerting to hear those people discuss him without really knowing what's going on in the borough, and to make comments about. I think this will be a council decision, not just a committee decision.
No, I realize that. I just wanted to see some concepts and get an idea.
Well, and all council will be given the concepts, and then all council can decide if they want something different, something smaller, something bigger. All council will have a part into that discussion.
Yeah. So, we're working on that, and yeah, we should hope to have some sort of concept layout to present to you guys here in the future. I do know that, we just got an email today that prices for playground equipment are going up next year, so if we can get this project through this year, that'd be great, at least purchase the equipment. I know that was the plan to do that, so if we can get that on the books, that'd be great, so we don't have to...
Do you want that on next month's agenda?
We can discuss that.
Okay, great.
With that, I don't have anything else specific, so if there's any questions for any items on your agenda, I'm more than happy to answer them, but...
Great report. Just for everyone's knowledge, Jacob has been working very, very hard for the borough, so we thank you, Jacob.
Thank you, no problem.
Okay, next is the Borough Manager Report.
Just a few comments. One, I have to turn on my, okay, just a few comments. I don't know if you've noticed, I think the sound system has improved significantly, and, you know, so I want to thank Matt and whoever else helped him.
And you, Mr. Dillon.
I don't know anything about sound systems.
You realized there was an issue and you fixed it.
Well, we all try, we're gonna try. And I agree with your compliments to our engineers, Jacob and Kurt, I think they've done an excellent job in the last couple of months. Some significant items before council tonight they consider approving. Also want to thank the police chief for staying on top of the key fobs, and I think that, that subject is ready for your award this evening also. I had a somewhat of a long dissertation prepared in reference to a few people who attended last month's meeting and made some comments that gave me some concerns, but I'm gonna keep it short. They felt that I was working the staff too hard. I did go down and speak with the staff, and the staff does not feel I'm working them too hard. I think we're all working together. We've had a significant loss of a staff member for over three months who got hurt at home. So, our 25, our four staff members were down to three staff members, and given the fact that it happened, I think, July 1st or thereabouts, that was the time of vacations and whatever, so it was a very difficult period of time for those that could show up to work, to work, but especially with a lot going on. When I first came here, I was confronted with a list from the prior manager of bullet points of items that needed to be addressed, and I asked Virginia, I said, "Virginia, take these bullet points and let's put numbers next to them, and also put numbers on the pages so we can see what the heck we're talking about." Well, it was four pages, and it was 72 significant items, of items that should have been handled, you know, last year, prior years, or well before the time I wandered into the building. So, everybody's pitched in, we're addressing those 72 items, and we're addressing many more, so I want to again thank staff for bearing with me and working, I think, to the best of their ability. And I think I'll leave a go at that for now.
I too want to reiterate that Mr. Dillon has been doing a great job. It was a little disconcerting to hear those people discuss him without really knowing what's going on in the borough and to make comments about how he's doing too much too fast. It's about time the borough did too much too fast. Solicitor, anybody for council? Okay, solicitor report.
Thank you, Madam President. Can I be heard?
Okay.
I want to remind everyone that need to vote honorary for November 5th, it's just a public community announcement. It's an important election, it's a presidential election, you should vote. I want to thank council, I want to thank the engineers, and I want to specifically, the chief, and I want to specifically thank Jim Dillon, who's been an absolute pleasure to work with. How lucky is Morrisville Borough that you have the single most experienced, credentialed manager in all of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, working in Little Morrisville Borough. And I think you're gonna see great things, you're seeing great things already, you're gonna see even more. His background is so extensive, the people that he's trained, many of them in this business are legends in and of themselves. He's the legend of legends. And I just wanted to say, Jim, we're really, I'm speaking from our office, we are thrilled to work with you, and the amount that you've accomplished in a few weeks is more than what used to be accomplished in six months. And I don't know how you could do too much too fast, that should be a compliment. Most CEOs, if someone said that, they'd get a big raise. And since we're not getting paid yet, I don't know what, I don't know how you could complain, it's like a gift horse in the mouth. You get something that's too good to be true, and you still have to complain about it, and that's something about human nature. It's something we should all look inside each other. You complain about things, you have a gift that was given to you, and you don't like the wrapping paper that it came with, or you don't like, I mean, it's unbelievable. So, I for one, and our firm is thrilled to have you, and we want council to know that we're thrilled to work with Jim Dillon for as long as he'll be kind enough to grace us with his presence and his knowledge and experience. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. Police Chief Report.
Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. I'm not too great with this microphone, but Mr. Dillon, you're making me feel like I'm doing it. So, thank you for having me. Real quickly, I'll just go through some of the statistical information, and then I'll make a few announcements. Our Part 1 and Part 2 offenses were up a little bit last month, and the Part 1 being the more serious offenses of those, we had 39 of the Part 1 more serious offenses, 26 of them were thefts. Of those, the majority were from motor vehicles. So, I've said in the past, and I say it again, please, please lock your doors. Most of these thefts are from people coming across the bridge, because we've interacted, we've made a few arrests, and they're pulling door handles, and the doors that open are the doors that enter, and those are the ones that they're stealing from. So, please, lock your doors. With that, our arrests were up from last month, which is a good thing, and our citations were up over 30%, which means our officers are out there working. So, I've been getting quite a few motor vehicle-related complaints around town, and we're trying to address all of them in the timely manner, and we're trying to prioritize. The biggest complaint areas are West Bridge Street, Palmer Avenue by the high school specifically, and South Pennsylvania Avenue. So, we're out there, two weeks ago, we lit up Bridge Street like a Christmas tree, we get officers out there on Palmer, but it's not as easy because we know what to cut through, but people aren't really getting up to speed, we set on the stop signs, and we're doing what we can. But I would like to say that since last council meeting, that our officers have conducted 62 traffic stops on South Pennsylvania Avenue. Of that, 22 of them were trucks, and 18 of those were done in the early morning hours, after 4:00 AM between 4:00 and 7:00. So, we are hearing the complaints. What I would like to ask the residents is to address those complaints to the police department. I don't necessarily monitor Facebook, and I see their complaints, and if I can identify who is making the post, I'll try to reach out, to thank them for bringing those concerns to our attention, and then we will address them. But please, send them to me, and I'll make sure we direct the resources. Halloween's approaching. We have a, a policy, if you'd like me to touch on it, I will. Okay, so Halloween this year is a Thursday, it's a school night, and there is a policy statement that is drawn up by the mayor and council. And just to touch on a few of the highlights, trick-or-treating is allowed until 8:00 PM. So, after 8:00 PM, we shouldn't have kids on the street, but we should be mindful of this. All children under 16 are supposed to be accompanied by an adult. Some tips for our motorists, be mindful that there are going to be children out there, be mindful of the speed, especially in our side roads. We can't always see these, you know, smaller children that are gonna be in costumes, sometimes darker, it's gonna be difficult. Children may be walking alone, children may be walking in the street, crossing over, we need to be mindful. Also, Halloween parties, if we're going to party, we need to drive sober, have a designated driver. For our parents, please ensure that our children are wearing something that is either reflective or visible, carrying a glow stick or a flashlight, something, something so that they can be seen. A lot of our costumes are going to be darker, and kids may not like it, but stick a glow stick around their neck or in their backpack or something, we need to be able to see them. Also, remind our kids to pay attention, because the cars aren't always doing that. Couple tips, make sure we're walking on the sidewalks, we're crossing at the crosswalks, we're looking both ways. We're actually going to be in Grandview and Holy Trinity next week, we're doing Halloween safety presentations for 5th graders. So, myself and Officer DeLuca are going to give the 5th graders the tips and do's and don'ts to keep a safe Halloween, and so they can enjoy their candy, and their dentist will be happy at two or three weeks later. So... Just a couple of updates. I checked in on our Tahoe last week, and last week I was told two to three weeks, they were waiting, we're actually in line behind the sheriff's department. With that, we have equipment for a track system, which allows the officers to do electronic citations in their vehicles. And we're also still waiting to get our server migrated over so we could become CAD compliant, which means the officers will have the county CAD in the cars, it'll be integrated with the track system, and it's gonna allow us to do our jobs more efficiently, also allow us to see where we are each other, the calls for service, and keeping a better idea of what's happening out there. The CAD is real-time, and it's monitored by the county, and we can monitor as well. Detours on Pennsylvania Avenue, actually all over in this area because of the ramps from Route 1 to Pennsylvania. I was told last week that those were going to be shut down and covered up and removed early last week. They were still out there this week, I made a phone call yesterday, and now I found out that there's going to be another detour on Thursday evening to do more work on Route 1. So, there's been a few concerns, complaints from residents, and I tried to, we put it out on Facebook, we're trying to send a message that it is temporary, there is a bit of inconvenience, there's a little more traffic, especially in the Washington Street areas, but it's, it is temporary, and I'm told that Thursday night should be the end of it.
Do we have any say about how, where they send the traffic?
So, I spoke to Chris Hook, I'm not sure what organization, but he was part of the engineers that did the traffic studies to determine the detour routes. They sent the detour routes to me, we took a look at them, we put a few heads together, and we decided that while a little inconvenient on Washington Street, it was the best route to take for traffic. These detours were also supposed to be in effect in the overnight hours, work was to be done from 8:00 PM until 5:00 AM, when traffic is limited and at a minimum. So, for the conditions that we have, they were the best that we could, we could agree on. It's just we didn't think it was gonna last this long. So... I wanted to bring up something, a letter that I received earlier this week from the Border Gentlemen's Club. We know that we had an unfortunate incident there about a month and a half ago, and it was a high-profile police matter. So, they sent a letter of appreciation, and I understand, and I, I get if you read the letter, that they want to be a member of the community, of the business community in Morrisville. But some of the things that I highlighted that they said in this letter, and I'm just gonna paraphrase, their interactions with our police officers, they characterize us, my officers, our officers, as beyond professional, courteous and prompt, simply amazing in every aspect possible, and truly and wholeheartedly appreciated. I bring this up because that incident that we had there was the worst of the worst. It was one where split-second decision-making had to be made. Often these things will impact life and death, we know that the outcome of that was unfortunate. But I also heard the same things from the county DA's office. And I say this because our goal is to put forth a professional model of policing, and I think we're doing that now, and it's being recognized in the community and at the DA's office. So, I think it's just important to recognize our officers when you see them, and just understand that our goal is to provide that high level of police service and be professionals every day. So, I think this was just important to mention, and I just wanted to say thank you also to everybody sitting up there tonight, to Virginia, to Jacob, we've had meetings, everybody in this room has done tremendous to make me feel welcome, to bring me up to speed. It's a little different across the river, and I'm a little slow sometimes in the uptake, but everyone has been very patient with me, John as well in the booth there, so I want to say thank you, and if you have any questions, I'm here.
I have a question.
Where'd that come from? Melissa, sorry.
So, there was coffee with a cop?
We had coffee with a cop, whatever day that was.
We could go Thursday.
We could go Thursday at Giant. I think we talked about it briefly at the last council meeting, but the date wasn't locked in yet. It was success. I would have liked to have seen more people, but we didn't have a whole lot of time to advertise it, but it was the first, hopefully, of many.
Of many, good, good.
Yes.
Was well done, all our officers, I have to say, this is the first time that all our officers showed up.
We had a great showing, and Giant was fantastic.
Giant was fantastic, they gave donuts, coffee, they were so, so welcoming to us, but it was, it was great to see every single officer, because not always does that happen.
No, and these are the kind of things that we want to do with our community, and whether it be that, or the trunk-or-tree, or nationalite-out, where we're doing, you know, these community events to get out there and let the public see us, but it's great because when we have these things, I have to tell some officers, no, there was more officers that wanted to do it, but, you know, with space is limited, that's a great thing. People, our officers want to be involved, they want to engage, so I'm fortunate.
You're very fortunate.
I am.
We are all very fortunate.
We are.
My light's on, on. For coming to the senior center for our turkey dinner. I think it was really informative, and I feel that they felt a great kind of comfort that you were there, talking to them, and informing them, and I think you showed a real sense of caring for this part of our community, so thank you again.
Thank you for having me, it was my pleasure, and just like with the Business Association, I took this role because I do care, and I think it's, you know, incumbent upon us as police officer today to have that relationship with our community. It's not just about answering calls, writing tickets, making arrests, it's about that engagement and those relationships, so it was absolutely my pleasure.
Last week, the chief addressed our Marsville Business Association, and the feedback was spectacular. So many people who didn't make it heard about me and wished they had made it, and overall, you know, they're very happy to have met you, and you made a great impression, so thank you very much.
Thank you for having me. I mean, I couldn't complain at all because the food was delicious, too. So... Any other questions?
Okay, thank you, chief.
Thank you.
All right, any, so we're gonna move on to the consent agenda, any public comment? Okay, so here we go. Approval of the council meeting minutes from 9:17:24. Approval of the bill list from 9:1 to 9:30:24 in the amount of $342,859.90. Approval to adopt the Halloween policy for perpetuity, subject to the chief of police modifications. This will be the last year that we have this item on our agenda, it will just be assumed that every Halloween this is in effect, until the police chief changes something. We will make an announcement during October, but we will not be voting on any policies. Approval of the Winterfest Parade for Saturday, 12:07 at 2:00 PM with a rain date of Sunday, 12:08. Acknowledged receipt of $55,219.15 from the PA Department of the Auditor General and approved distribution of the funds to the Volunteer Firefighters Relief Association. Approval of returning $59,667.74 in state aid funds for the uniform pension to PMRS. Approval to adopt the emergency action plan for the Marsville Flood Protection Levy, replacing an older version. Approval to adopt the operations and maintenance manual for the Marsville Flood Protection Levy, replacing the older version. Call for a resolution to revise the number of required signatures from three to two for accounts payable checks. Authorized signers include the Borough Manager or Borough Secretary and Council President or Vice President. Call for a resolution to apply for a local share account LSA grant through the Department of Community and Economic Development, DCED, and designating officials to execute documents for the Patriots Park Improvement Project. Call for resolution to apply for a local share account LSA grant through the Department of Community and Economic Development, DCED, and designating officials to execute documents for the Trenton Avenue and Plaza Boulevard Traffic Signal Replacement Project. Call for resolution to apply for a local share account LSA grant through the Department of Community and Economic Development, DCED, and designating officials to execute documents for the Hillcrest Avenue Stormwater Improvements Project. Call for resolution to apply for a local share account LSA grant through the Department of Community and Economic Development, DCED, and designating officials to execute documents for the West Palmer Stormwater Improvement Project. Call for resolution to apply for a local share account LSA grant through the Department of Community and Economic Development, DCED, and designating officials to execute documents for the Marsville Fire Department Light Rescue High Water Vehicle. Call for a motion to authorize Gilmore and Associates to proceed with preparing recommendations for potential traffic calming measures along South Pennsylvania Avenue from US Route 1 to Post Road, and West Philadelphia Avenue from South Pennsylvania Avenue to Wright Avenue. Call for a motion to advertise an ordinance banning trucks on South Pennsylvania Avenue. Scott Robinson, will you make a motion? Denny, will you second that motion? Dennis, I mean, Denny.
Who's Denny?
I'm so sorry.
I second the motion.
That was a little too, too, too comfortable there. We have a first and a second. Any conversation, any, any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes seven to zero. Action items. Call for a motion to perform a survey of the Delaware River between Bridge Street and the Marsville Borough Falls border for purposes of identifying feasibility for a day dock boating facility, approximate cost of $8,000. Melissa, would you make the motion?
So moved.
Marie, would you second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes seven to zero. Call for a motion, oh, anything from the public? No. Call for a motion to accept the Bucks County Planning Commission proposal to prepare a recommendation for planning and zoning for various properties along the Delaware River between Bridge Street and the Marsville Borough Falls Borough Order, not to exceed $5,000. Andrew, would you make the motion? Catherine, would you second? We have a motion and a second. Any questions? Anything from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes seven, zero. Call for motion to approve 215 Secure to install the Gallagher Access Control and Card Reader FOB system at Borough Hall for $53,850 out of the ARPA funds. Scott, would you make the motion? Dennis, would you make the motion?
So moved.
Catherine, would you second?
I second it.
We have a first and a second. Any questions? All of, all in favor? Public comment? All, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes seven, zero. Call for motion... Call for motion, oh. Call for motion to approve release and separation agreement with Corporal Chris McIntyre for Andrew, would you make the motion? Marie, would you second?
Second.
First and a second. Discussion? No discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes 7 to 0. We're going to change motion 11E. And the new motion is going to say, because we only just got this information a few hours ago, the motion to accept Corporal William Smith's unconditional notice of retirement effective immediately. So I'll repeat that one more time. Motion to accept Corporal William Smith's unconditional notice of retirement effective immediately. Scott, would you make the motion? Melissa, would you second?
Second.
Motion is second. Discussions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, public comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes 7 to 0. Call for motion to adopt an ordinance repealing ordinance number 1045, authorizing events involving, involving the consumption of alcoholic beverages in public parks. Andrew, would you make the motion? Melissa, would you second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion? All, everyone in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes 7 to 0. Call for motion to advertise an update of the borough's universal roadway standards ordinance to meet current state standards and update the requirement for roadway opening repair standards. Catherine, would you make the motion? Dennis, would you second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Discussion? Public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes 7 to 0. We don't have any public comment for non-agenda items? Anybody out there? Nope? Okay. Move on. Mayor's comments.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I want to begin by expressing how grateful Morrisville is to have Jim Dillon with us, helping to move our community forward in such meaningful ways. In a short time here, Jim has already checked off so many important items, closing gaps that had been left open. Thank you, Jim, for your dedication and hard work to Morrisville. Last month, I had the distinct honor of attending my first Eagle Scout ceremony. Congratulations to Aiden on the remarkable achievement and thank you for inviting me to be a part of such a special occasion. Today was another memorable day in Morrisville as I had the pleasure of spending time with the 4th grade social studies class from Holy Trinity School. It was a fantastic experience to show the children how local government operates. Alongside our council president and chief, we gave them a tour and even held a mock meeting right up here on the desk, which was a lot of fun. Thank you to the students and staff for joining us. This month is, this month is full of exciting events in Morrisville. We are still collecting new and gently-used costumes for children in need until this Friday, October 18th. This initiative is in partnership with Bella Sisley and I wanted to extend a big thank you to everyone who has donated so far. I don't know if you've seen the box down there, but it's overflowing and Bella Sisley's is also near full. So thank you, everyone. Your generosity has been overwhelming and we cannot wait to see the joy on the children's faces when they pick out their costumes this Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. here at Borough Hall. Looking ahead, on October 29th, we'll be hosting a trunk-or-treat event at Borough Hall, organized by our police department and myself. Be sure to bring the kids down for a fun evening of sweets and celebrations. And on October 26th, Summer Seat is holding ghost tours. Please be sure to call and schedule your tour today. I already have. I'm excited to have my first ghost tour over there. I've heard it was really good. So please, you know, call and schedule your tour today. Or you can find them on their social media pages. Like council president mentioned, CAC has kicked off and our first meeting took place in September and hope to have more residents join this committee. This is a resident committee. Helen and I will be there to help get this committee started and then hand it off and let the residents take control. We hope to have more residents join, so please join us on October 23rd at 7:00 p.m. here at Borough Hall, right here. So thank you all for your continued support of our wonderful community. Have a great evening and please be safe with Halloween coming up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to mention that today, the 4th graders at Holy Trinity came to Borough Hall. They, they came into this room, they came and they visited the police station and we had some mock council meetings. And they were all very excited to be sitting up here. They were fighting, actually, to get behind our chairs and actually bang the gavel. They were fighting over who got to be council president and who got to be mayor. So it was, it was great to see, but they got the Robert's Rule of Order down and they understood, you know, how to, how to do public comment and call for a vote. So it was, it was cute. But some of the things that they asked us, and I'm going to read to you, that they want us to consider is to reduce Taylor Swift ticket prices. They want us to cut taxes for the working people. They want more no-littering signs and they want that if you pay rent, you get rent back. Rent back. They want free rent.
Well, you also got to tell them about the fun ones. Some want six months of school, six months of vacation.
Yeah. They also ask for those. But these are the things they came up to me after the fact and said, could you mention this? So I am mentioning their request of council. We'll get right on Taylor Swift. That'll be next month's agenda item.
Absolutely. It was such a wonderful time. It was great to have them here. And thank you to council president and chief, too, for participating and making it so memorable for them. They were so excited. You should have saw it.
Oh, my God, we couldn't keep them quiet. So, okay. So I think I talk enough. Any council members have anything to say?
We have a committee report. That's it.
Nothing? Okay. Go ahead.
So the Parks and Recreation Committee held their last event on the October 6th. It was the Jazz Festival. It had to be rescheduled. Ended up being an absolutely beautiful day. And a lot of people came out. A lot of people just couldn't believe what an amazing day it was. They enjoyed themselves. The only complaint we had was we didn't have as many food trucks because we'd had to reschedule. So we only had a couple. But then they walked over to Bella Sisley and to other places and got food and brought and sat and enjoyed the music. So I want to thank all the people and volunteers, which we have numerous amounts of volunteers that come and help set up, help put, put it on and help take it down and clean up. It's a volunteer-led event. Also, I want to thank, as I always do, our John and his crew. Everything was beautiful, was picked up. But also the residents and the people attended, they don't leave litter. They pick it all up. They go around. And I think that's a, a real tribute to the people who enjoy a park setting. So thank you. And just thank you again for all your support. October next week will be our last Parks and Recreation meeting for the year because in November, we usually have budget meetings and stuff. So, so I was just going to announce that this will be the last one for 2024. Yeah, just, just to finalize and get all the, all the budgets and all the money and what we spent to give a final report. But we usually have to cancel Novembers anyway and, and sometimes December's because of, of budgets. So I hope that's okay.
I think Mr. Dillon has the budget under control. So, so we're, I think we're all good.
Well, just in case. But, okay. Thank you. And thank you all who've supported the events this year. Really appreciated it. And to the, our, our borough staff who've helped with it, too. Thank you again.
Thank you, Catherine. Anything else from council?[1782.14]